Now I'll call this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you have an agenda, proposed agenda for tonight's meeting in front of you. We also have some minutes from several meetings and also from, we have consent items. We have four consent items on the agenda tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion to, yes, sir?
Mayor Phil, item number four.
We're gonna take, we're gonna take four off.
We did not receive the required documentation.
Take four off until we can get a little more information together.
And Mayor, also, item one on consent, while I believe that you're going to support that, I think the public might be interested in learning a little bit more about that item, so if we could have a discussion, we'll take that off.
Yes, sir. If we have time tonight, we'll do that. If not, we'll roll it to another time.
Well, we'll discuss it this evening if we can. Thank you.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say the five I said out.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, so our first item we're gonna cover tonight, we're gonna start with number five here, and this is the family violence and child abuse.
You want to do the adoption of the minutes?
I included that in that motion.
Yeah, you included it in the motion.
So at this time, I'm gonna let you introduce our guest here tonight, and...
What I'm gonna actually do is step back, ask Mike to introduce the guest. I'm gonna ask Dawn if she will come up, so she's closer, because she's gonna be part of the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about something that I'm very passionate about. But first, I'd like to introduce everybody. First is our District Attorney, Ernie Lee. Appreciate Ernie taking the time out to come and talk to us a little bit about child abuse. Dawn Rochelle, who's with the Partnership. Anne Marie Raymond, who's with Partnership. Julie Collins, who's the Chair, she's sitting in the back. Sherry Slater from Onslow County. Heidi Bauer from Onslow County. And Angela Lee from Onslow County. Thank y'all for coming. And also Kathleen Holbrook from the Child Advocacy Center. And Melina Rose Walters, who's from Prevent Child Abuse. So I'd like to, one of the things that we've been looking at, this has actually started during the end of the year, we look at the statistics, our crime statistics, and one of the things that we've noticed is that there's been a 58% increase in child victimizations, especially within the last two years. And I think, I think it's so important that we start talking about this, because this year, we had two child homicides, which is something that we don't see all the time. And that 58% has drawn the attention to trying to think about ways that we can reduce that, because this is really unacceptable, to look at our children being victimized. And when we start to look at abuse and neglect cases, we can see that there was a 74% increase in abuse and neglect cases since 2013. And there's a number of reasons for that, but I think that something that we've been talking about for the last year or so, about the opioid issue and the issues that we're facing with opioids in the Mental Health Task Force, I think has some bearing on this, on these statistics. So from a local standpoint, from Jacksonville's standpoint, this is something that we've seen, that we think bears some serious attention, because any child that's victimized is one too many. And I think we start to look at what we can do. We've done a great job of enforcement. Our District Attorney is one of the best in the state, and he is, we have a great partnership with the Child Advocacy Center in order to investigate and prosecute those cases, as well as DSS. But we gotta do something different in order to keep those cases from coming to our CAC. We gotta do something to prevent them. Now I'd like to turn this over to Ernie Lee, and he's gonna talk a little bit about child abuse.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and my honor to be here tonight. This is unfortunately a topic we have to talk about in this country, in this state, in this county, because it's unfortunate, it's very prevalent. We've got people here from the DSS who deal with this on a daily basis, certainly with the child advocacy center on a daily basis, and certainly in law enforcement, and of course, as a prosecutor, we deal with this all the time. I think most people out there don't even realize it's even occurring until it actually affects them personally. But unfortunately, it's occurring more than more. And I guess what I always fear is, we always know about those cases that are actually reported. I always wonder about those cases that are never reported, where those victims are actually suffering in silence, sometimes for a lifetime, and they never report it to anyone. And I always just feel so badly for those people, because they go through their entire life sitting in silence, never letting anyone know what happened to them, either physically or sexually, or emotionally or mentally, and they go to their grave having to live with that alone. But we do have, unfortunately, have a lot of cases here in Onslow County. Let's talk about what is child abuse. And this is more of a generic definition right here. A child maltreatment includes all types of abuse and neglect of a child under the age of 18. Now, that's under the age of 18. In fact, in North Carolina, we have a 16 age limit, but by a parent, caregiver, or another person, a custodial role, that results in harm, potential for harm, or threat of harm to a child. Again, that's more of a generic definition. In North Carolina, we have very specific statutes dealing with child abuse, child neglect, abandonment, and those type things. We have some very specific statutes. Our legislature has addressed it, dealing with a serious bodily injury, serious injury, those type things. We also have quite a few sexual offense-type statutes. Law enforcement is very aware of those. Child Advocacy Center, DSS, very aware of those. We have a large array of varied sex offense-type statutes, including indecent liberties, sex offense, of course, statutory rape, things such as that. What is child abuse? There's really four types then, that we recognize. Of course, physical abuse, I think we all know what physical abuse is. That can be generally some type of assaultive-type behavior. We've got some examples up there, and I've seen all of these at least once or twice in my, as a prosecutor, but it's gonna generally deal with physical force. This will be physical abuse. We also have sexual abuse. This will be inducing or coercing a child to engage in sexual acts. We've got some examples there, fondling, penetration, exposing a child to other sexual activities. Unfortunately, we have quite a bit of this in Onslow County, as well as we do in the state of North Carolina, and unfortunately, in this country as a whole. This is something we deal with on a routine basis, unfortunately. And it seems like the children are getting earlier and younger, they're getting much younger. Emotional abuse, that's sometimes hard to define, but it does exist. Children can be emotionally abused by a caretaker, a parent, someone, an authority over them. It could be things such as name-calling, "You're too fat, you're not good enough, you'll never make it, you're not worth anything." That is emotional abuse. I think we've probably all been in stores or places before. We've seen parents, or caregivers, or caretakers saying things to children. I would never say to my children, in private, much less in public, but I've seen those type things. And of course, neglect, that's felony care for a child's basic needs. Unfortunately, that's becoming more and more prevalent, too. Let me just tell you, in Onslow County, that's not on one of the slides, but in Onslow County, right now, we have 32 defendants charged with child abuse or exploitation of a child, pending as of today. That's involving 103 charges against 32 defendants. We have 12 defendants charged with child physical abuse. Two of those are charged with homicide. Of course, we've got the most recent case, we're most familiar with, Mariah Wood's case. Right now, we have an individual charged in that. We've got one charge with attempted murder. So we have 12 defendants engaged in about 19 offenses. That's what we have pending right there. So of those, we have, so we have 40, excuse me, 50, excuse me, 44 defendants right now facing charges at this very moment in Onslow County for these type of offenses. Contributory circumstances, or these are things that may, in fact, be somewhat the basis for why these things happen. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and add one that's not even on this list, there's some people that are just mean. I mean, that's just the way it is. Some people are mean. Some people are bad. And I've seen that, but it's not to say they didn't have some of these other things affecting their lives prior to doing this, such as unemployment, family illness, misappropriation of family funds, lack of intelligence and education. Although, I'm not really sure how intelligent you had to be to know that it's wrong to hurt a child, or to abuse a child. But we've seen that before. We have some people who do have low IQs. Substance abuse, that's becoming more and more prevalent. Onslow County has a tremendous opioid problem right now, and it's an epidemic, frankly, just like eastern North Carolina does. But there's a lot of substance abuse, that sometimes they go in this alcohol or other types of drugs. Lack of coping or parenting skills. There are some people, frankly, that have children that really are not equipped to have children, either because they're not mature enough, they've not been taught the right way themselves, they grew up in abusive environments. It's kind of amazing, this country, what you gotta do to get a driver's license, but anyone can have a child. Anyone can have a child. I know DSS deals with this all the time, very young couples, who really don't know how to care for the child. Some are not married, some are married. And it becomes, we see this a lot in our system. Unwanted pregnancy. Single or teen parenting. It's tough enough being a teenager, much less being a teenager with a child, especially if you're alone. And we see that quite a bit, just because of the stress level that may cause. Parent having been abused as a child, we see that all the time. It seems to be a generational thing, where if a parent has been abused, not always, but sometimes they may, themselves may turn out to be abusers. Of course, not always, because we all have to make choices ourselves. We cannot blame others all the time. We've got to make our own personal choices. But we do see, there seems to be somewhat of a pattern in that. Lack of self-esteem. Marriage problems, illness, or stressful event. I mean, raising children is difficult. It is difficult. I have three myself, and it is difficult sometimes. They can try your patience, anyone that's a parent who's listening. We know that, but we've got to deal with it appropriately. And unfortunately, some people out there just don't seem to be equipped that well to deal with it. And as a result, that's when those very people then land up either injuring the child, or assaulting the child, or abusing the child, and that's when they have contact with DSS. That's when they have contact with CAC, or that's when they have contact with law enforcement, then eventually with me. And again, some people are just bad, and just do it. Sometimes, I don't know why they do it. Factors affecting child abuse. Now, this is kind of a broad topic here, but actually, what this slide really should say is, factors that go into, say, investigating, charging, prosecuting, okay? Because all these factors play a role in child abuse. What I mean by that, child's age, developmental status, when the abuse or neglect occurred, that becomes very important, not only for the investigators, but for DSS, for CAC, trying to talk to these children. Because if, if they're very, very young, unless you're highly, highly trained, it's sometimes very difficult to speak to a child and get them to relay what happened to them. You know, I think about this often, too, when I'm in court. When we bring some of these children into court, they have to come into a courtroom in front of 12 people, plus alternates, sometimes as many as 15 people, they do not know, in front of a judge, in front of a prosecutor, in front of a defense attorney, in front of the defendant, the perpetrator, and then have to tell the world what happened to them. And that is very difficult. It's difficult if you're an adult, much less a child, but it happens all the time, on a daily basis in this nation, where children had to come in and talk about things that have happened to them, that we don't even want to talk about in private, much less in public. But it happens a lot. The type of abuse, of course, that also then goes to the type of investigation, the charging, the prosecuting, because each of these things will require different types of investigative techniques. For example, sexual abuse, we are very lucky, we are very fortunate to have a Child Advocacy Center here, who can deal with these children, who can talk to these children. Because I can tell you, in law school, they don't teach you how to do this. They teach you how to try cases, but we don't ever practice on dealing with young children. But thank goodness, we have a Child Advocacy Center that has the equipment, has the personnel to do that. I just looked at a video in a case yesterday, in which I'm preparing for trial in, and where someone from the Child Advocacy Center interviewed a very young child, and did an outstanding job in doing so. I would not be equipped to do it as well as I did. I'm not equipped. But when we look at these type cases, it does affect the type of investigation, charging, and prosecuting. Also, a lot of this, in order to prove these things, you've got to have physical records or medical records. It's very difficult sometimes to prove a case with just one person's word. But, you know, fortunately, today, we have access to medical records, we have access to school records, we can sometimes get those into evidence. It's also amazing that the number of people who will do things, and in this social media age, love to put it on Facebook, or send it on text, and that's something else that we can do, to try to bolster these cases, try to get that type of information. The frequency, duration, severity of the abuse, I mean, this comes very important, particularly in the charging investigation, because the severity may dictate the actual charge that will result. If we can prove serious bodily injury in a child abuse case, that rises up to a higher level felony. So it's very important that we look at the severity of the abuse. And again, that's where the doctors and the medical records also come into play, because they can come in and actually testify as to their opinions, as to the type of injury sustained by the child. And you need an expert to do that, with some type of degree of medical certainty, and we have that quite a bit in court. And then the relationship between the victim and his or her abuser. Of course, it becomes very difficult sometimes, these type of cases, in investigating these cases, as well as prosecuting these type cases, as to what the relationship is between the victim and the abuser. Many of these cases are in the home, and some of the things that we've all had to deal with, whether it be DSS, or the Child Advocacy Center, or law enforcement, if it's in the home, sometimes the other person that's living in the home, whether it be a mother or a father, the other spouse, or boyfriend or girlfriend, may not want to be the most cooperative. And we've seen that before, because sometimes the one that's maybe charged, or has been charged, is the breadwinner in the family. And I've seen that repeatedly. And it becomes very, very difficult in doing some of these cases as a result of that. Any questions about what I just said?
But I think, Ernie and I will both agree that one, that we need to get in front of this, that we need to try to do something to prevent it from happening. And I think that's, that's, I mean, we're doing a good job in prosecuting these cases, but I'm not sure we're as effective as we can be to try to prevent those cases. And I think that's, that's what we're going to talk about now.
Thank you. So to further frame this conversation, we'd like to show a very quick, two-minute video.
We all like to think of childhood as this time of joy and innocence, but, I mean, for many of us, it's just not true.
When you grow up in these type of situations, it's not something you talk about. I know I didn't.
The first thing that we found is that adverse childhood experiences are common.
Ah, you know, kids are young, they don't know what's going on, they won't remember anyway. Well, the child may not remember, but the body remembers.
There was this incredible gee whiz effect, you mean adverse childhood experiences cause heart disease, and lung disease, and liver, and cancer?
Exposure to trauma affects children's developing brains. The impact is on your behavior, it's on your heart, it's on your DNA, like, how do you, how do you deal with all that?
I don't reach out, because I'm not used to that.
We have a whole new body of knowledge now, that could open up what we have up till now, been seen as intractable, unsolvable problems.
No child should be punched or kicked.
No child should be punched or kicked.
If you can get the science into the hands of the general population, they will invent very wise actions.
Do you feel like any of the interventions have been making a difference?
They made all the difference in the world.
It's there, it's possible, and a defeatist attitude is completely disconnected from what 21st century science is telling us, and we should be going after that like a bear.
So as the agency, the Partnership for Children, houses the Child Advocacy Center, and we're so fortunate to have Kathleen lead that charge, we have seen over almost 2,000 children now. So in kind of what now, how do we, how do we prevent children from coming to the door? Well, I was thinking, and in our world, we talk a lot about the why of things, and how to articulate that. And I thought about a sermon I recently heard at church, and the difference between empathy and compassion. And we all have empathy, we all feel for people of misfortune, but compassion is an action, and it's a change, it's a way to change. So one of the ways that we believe we can start prevention efforts, so we don't have so many intervention, is through our partner in the state, Prevent Child Abuse in North Carolina. And Malia Rose Waters, here next to me, has been working with communities, and we'd like you to hear a little bit about what is happening in other areas, that we believe we can do even better here.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Malia Rose Waters. I'm the Parent and Community Engagement Manager at Prevent Child Abuse, North Carolina, and we're the only statewide organization that's dedicated to the prevention of child abuse and neglect. A couple of years ago, we took a look at what was happening across our state in regards to having a strategic plan to prevent child abuse and neglect. We didn't find a whole lot on the community level, or on the state level, so we've taken that as our charge, that we really want to help communities create these child abuse prevention plans, a strategic plan. We know that through the Strengthening Families Protective Factors framework, that we can prevent child maltreatment. And I want to emphasize this, that the lifetime estimated cost associated with just one year of confirmed cases of child maltreatment in North Carolina is $2 billion. And this is a completely preventable problem. We have science, we have evidence to back that up. The Strengthening Families Protective Factors framework is evidence-informed, and each of those protective factors are listed there on the screen. So one is social and emotional competence of children. So what that's going to be is bonding with your child, creating a nurturing relationship with your child, teaching your child empathy, teaching your child how to get along with others. Knowledge of parenting and child development, that's, you know, learning parenting skills. You know, we all, as a mom, I can tell you, I went to, you know, classes before I had my child, to learn how to birth a baby, but then I didn't know about any classes afterwards. And we all need to learn different skills on how to parent. It's not something that's just innate, it's also a learned skill. Parental resilience, so that's learning how to bounce back and get through difficult times, and come out stronger on the other side, and also building skills around resilience. So resilience is not something that we're born with, it's something that we practice throughout our lives. Social connections, so that's about having positive connections in your life. And if you do have toxic relationships in your life, learning how to establish boundaries around that. And concrete support for parents, that's essentially having your basic needs met, but if you're unable to meet the basic needs of your family, knowing where to go in your community to ask for help, and knowing that it's okay to ask for help. So as you hear these five protective factors, a lot of them do complement what you said about the contributory circumstances. We know that if we lift up these protective factors in families, that the incidence of child maltreatment decreases. So what we've been doing, I'm working in three counties right now, specifically Cumberland County, Halifax County, and New Hanover Counties. Cumberland has released their plan, and we went in front of the Board of Commissioners in November to have a resolution of support from them. This is a strategic plan that they've developed, it's a community plan, where there are a lot of partners there, cross-sector, from across the community. But also, it's important to note that we do have parents involved in this plan, because if you do want to change the lives of children, you have to change the lives of the people who are taking care of them. So it was very important for us to have parents and the parent voice there. You know, we could pass laws in Raleigh, you know, I'm from Raleigh, all day long, but we know that what is going to make the biggest impact and the biggest difference is what happens here in the community. And for you all to say, this is our, these are the strengths in our community, and we need to uplift them and support families in our community, so we can reduce the likelihood of child abuse and neglect. I do have, and I'm happy to send this to you electronically, if you'd like to take a look at this, this is the quick handout from Cumberland County. Their plan is the 90 by 30 plan, so their goal is a reduction in child maltreatment of 90%. So their goal is a reduction in child maltreatment of 90% by the year 2030. So if you'd like to take a look at this, I'll pass it on, and we can also send you electronic copies, if you'd like to take a look at that.
Thank you. And so wanting to be mindful of time, you know, I think that when I think about social problems, or really kind of any problem, I look at, is the status quo okay? And if the status quo is okay, then do nothing. But I think all of us would agree that a child being hurt is not okay, and it's 100% preventable. And one of the things that you notice in the plan is, it's a quote, actually, that I'd never heard, is that "Children are the living message we send to a time that we will not see." So we know that to go on this journey of this work, we are building something that will benefit in our legacy, its generations to come. And while that may seem overused or cliche to some, it's what drives, I think, all of our work. It's not an option that a child is hurt, it's just not an option. And we would ask for your partnership in a different way, if you will. We would love to convene a task force earlier in the process than was done, you know, with the mental health, I think we have a lot of track record with that, as our community. And there's so much amazing work going on in the community. So I believe that the resources are here. Perhaps it's a different way of coordinating it, perhaps it's a different messaging, perhaps an emphatic "children will not be hurt here" statement. But we would just ask for your partnership to help explore ending child abuse in Onslow County.
Could I ask a quick question? In Cumberland County, how did you come about developing the strategic plan there? You involved many people within your community, I'm sure, but did you set it up like Dawn's talking about, there with the task force?
So, the way that I came into Cumberland County is, I had originally started working with the Child Advocacy Center. And then, we partnered with the Partnership for Children there. And the Partnership for Children already had a committee that was formed, that had been meeting for a couple of years, and been, and working towards addressing early childhood issues. So it was nice that they already had a committee in place, but they weren't sure what they were going to do next. So that committee took on this charge, and they renamed what their committee was called. They came up with their own mission statement, vision statement, and have developed this committee. So, it came, it comes about a little bit differently in every community. And New Hanover County, it's being led by the Tri-County Collaborative, so that's the System of Care Collaborative. And then in Halifax, it's being led by a subgroup of their CCPT, their Community Child Protection Team. So it doesn't have to look the same in every community. We want to honor the strengths, and we also want the most passionate people there at the table, who really, really, truly want to be there. I feel like that's very important. And in every community, everyone that's there truly wants to be there.
When you say Cumberland County, you're speaking synonymously with the United States Army, of course. With our situation here in Onslow County, Jacksonville, Onslow County, we have the Marine Corps base, which is a similar situation as they have in Cumberland County. Do you draw anything from the military as far as help, or advice, or involvement?
Absolutely. So we do have representative from Fort Bragg at the table, and she's actually the supervisor of the home visiting program that they have. And they are very well-versed in the Protective Factors framework. And actually, it's been incredibly nice, because they have immersed the protective factors in a lot of different ways on base, that the community at large hasn't yet. For example, every parent is eligible for home visiting up to age three, at Fort Bragg. And that's something that's not available for the community at large. So one of the things that they are looking at is, you know, perhaps that is something that we need here in the community as well, to get, bring the community up at, up to where Fort Bragg is on support.
Well, I know, personally, you know, my observation of this situation is not much different than the opioid crisis that we're going through now. It has just as much, if not more of a devastating impact on society. And I like the idea of, anytime that we have the opportunity to put people together, that can think through a problem, that that's the way we should do it. It's working well with Sherry over there in Onslow County, with, you know, and our folks with the opioid, or the Mental Health Task Force, they've made a lot of headway so far. And I think that that could be, as you mentioned, a successful way to go about doing this.
Is it, is it a situation that we can make an extension of the Mental Health Task Force to incorporate this strategic planning process? Or would it be a separate committee?
I think it's separate.
Separate?
May I join?
Please. I fully agree that we need to convene some sort of collaborative effort. I didn't know what the most...
I think many of the players are the same, but because the mission of the Mental Health Task Force is so well-focused, I would suggest that we let that task force continue. Maybe some of the players, obviously Sherry with the county, Sherry Slater with the Assistant Manager, and others may serve on both. But the concept of establishing a task force, which the mayor and Dawn have talked about, however we do it, it has to be the right people. And just because a person is on the Mental Health Task Force, may or may not mean that they're the right person. So I think the concept of having a task force is something that it would be good if the city and the county could meet and talk together. While you've heard this presentation, and I'm sure that the, that all five of the county commissioners are watching tonight, so you can wave to them and say, "Good to see you, commissioners." At the same time, maybe we call a special joint session, or something, Mayor, you can decide how you want to provide leadership to this.
Well, I definitely like the idea of doing a resolution of support behind this, is a good starting point. I think we should be committed to the idea of getting some, getting it done.
Do we have any sort of collaborative efforts going along with Camp Lejeune?
Yes, we do. From a police standpoint, there's a tremendous amount of collaboration relative to, for example, family violence. While I'm not directly involved in that, what I can tell you is that if you're a marine personnel, and you're living off-base, and an issue happens in your home, which is considered violence, the police department calls the appropriate folks out at the base, and that person is removed from the home immediately, and kept out of that home for a set period of time. Mike, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, and I think, I think maybe the CAC does all of the investigations, whether they're on the military installation or not. So all the military folks, any child abuse case that goes in our community, in Onslow County, whether military or not, goes through the CAC.
And that's the same with family violence, too.
Sure, sure. And the other thing is, is that there are people on our steering committee for, for the CAC, that obviously we could tap into from the base, that are participating now. The hospital, the school system, some of the other folks that are, that are contributing to the direction of the CAC, that obviously we want to tap into.
Mr. Bittner, if I may answer the question this way, when we deal with a family violence matter of a military personnel out in the community, that family actually has better resources, in my opinion, than what we currently have. And let me explain to you what I'm saying. When that violence occurs, and the police department is involved, and then they call the military police, that person is immediately removed from that home for a set period of time, allowed to be cooled down. Unfortunately, if it's just a civilian couple, and they have family violence, and the police comes, and they find they can't arrest anybody, and at the end of the day, they say, "Okay, you folks are going to have to behave." The police department leaves, and the people who were involved in that violence are spending the night together in that house. So from my perspective, which may not be the correct perspective, the military families actually are given a little bit more protection and ability to cool down the situation than the general civilian. Chief, would you, or Dawn, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, in situations like that, and we've been working, obviously, with our partner at the District Attorney, and the SAJ, on some of those cases, as far as domestic violence is concerned. If we have a domestic violence case, that, that case is, if an officer goes out there, and there's not enough to make an arrest, then we call the command, and the command comes and gets that individual. And I, I mean, I can see that being part of our plan as we move forward, even with child abuse. If, if it's a military couple, then notify their command, because they do provide some excellent services, some excellent intervention services on the base, especially for children. When you look at some of the parenting classes, and some of those other services that they provide, there is a host of services on, on base that, that can be very beneficial to those children, and the families.
We also have a very good relationship with NCIS, the board Camp Lejeune, outstanding relationship. And when it involves a military service member, they will, in fact, then assist in many of the investigations, particularly getting records from the, from the base.
Would you think it's kind of a mixture, a kind of a close mixture there, of where these cases, whether they're military-related or civilian, is it about 50/50, or?
I'll look to Heidi or to Kathleen to give the current statistics.
Forty-six percent of all of the children seen in the Child Advocacy Center are military-dependent.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, the public may not have heard that, so Dawn, would you repeat the statistic?
Sure, forty-six percent of the children that have, that are currently being seen in the Child Advocacy Center is forty-six percent.
Military.
Military, thank you.
So, when you were talking about the task force idea, which I think is a great idea, do you have some ideas how you would construct this task force, or where you would draw your membership to the task force from?
Sure. Well, I think what, when we, when we asked the community regarding a mental health or suicide task force, we wanted to ensure, as Malia has mentioned, and the city manager, is really, you have to have the right people at the table, and I think it's people who are subject matter experts. It's also bringing in our, our state partners, who have seen how other communities have done it. Because quite frankly, when we know other communities are further along, and there are national models, there's research that's been done in other communities, I can think of Washington State, where they have seen over a 15-year period, a substantial reduction in, in so many things that are related to child maltreatment. So we would certainly want to do that. But we would, we would want to have people who are decision-makers, just as, as what has happened with the Mental Health Task Force, and people who can see things from a very coordinated view. I think many times with child abuse, it's, sometimes, we get, we certainly always want to keep the child in the middle of the table, because ultimately, that's who we are serving. But I think we have to be able to see the 30,000-level approach, or the macro-community-level approach, and sort of how do we tie these systems together that aren't coordinated? And sometimes, it's a policy change, sometimes it's a direction of money change, how do we leverage this? And really even, just starting with getting a handle on, how are we funding this? Where is the money? That was one of the most critical pieces to the discussion around suicide for this community, is truly understanding the data, and the demographics, and what are we doing? Because so many times, when we think of child abuse, we think of the Department of Social Services, and it resting on their shoulders, when really, it's, it's the entire community. And I think sometimes, just having the opportunity to have a conversation can create so much change.
Mayor, what I might suggest is that you authorize the staff to put together a working group, to bring back what a committee task force might look like. Obviously, we're going to involve the folks that are here, and involve the county, I mean, Sherry and her folks are going to be essential in our discussions of what a task force might look like. Do you think if we did that, and tried to report back within 90 days on what a task force looked like, that would be acceptable to you?
That's fine with me, I turn it in. Rest of council, what do you think?
Yes.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay.
Sooner the better, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's blight on our society, it's blight, the whole condition is. You know, we need to be proactive and do something, hopefully, preventive, prevention is the main focus.
Yeah, we're all tired of children being hurt.
I totally agree. Agree.
Well, we appreciate the excellent presentation by each of you. If we could, Mayor, while this group is here, and before we take a short break, could we look at the consent item number one, which was pulled? And that's the, the grant request regarding the opioid crisis, the application which the city would like to file with UNC School of Government. Mike, would you give a quick overview of what that grant application's about?
I'd be glad to. This is a partnership between UNC and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it's a, it's a $20,000 grant, it's $10,000 for services, and it's also $10,000 for planning. So our goal is to use some of that funding for the LEEDs program. When we had that presentation, a number, that law enforcement assisted diversion program. But it's also to use part of that funding to help us do some planning around the opioid issues. You know, we've, we've done a lot in the mental health field, we've done a lot working toward opioids, we've got a long way to go. And, and I think the, the events of this week, we had, we had three fatal overdoses, two at one time, one, one young, young person, around 20-years-old, that, that died in our community over the last week, and it's, it's, it is a crisis.
The, the grant itself is what we think a companion item to what the county, and the city, and others, I mean, the task force which you have, you know, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Lozera serving on. But this grant will help us look more holistically. This isn't about finding another wrinkle, it's about coming up with, if I may use the term, a master plan, or a holistic plan, on how we're going to try to address the opioid issue. So we would encourage you to authorize us filing that grant. Doesn't mean we'll get it, because I believe they're only going to fund ten statewide.
But it is, it is an opportunity for us to look at, look at some planning dollars, and also look at, at something, until the Crisis Center opens, that we might be able to use it, use for some services.
This is just a straight-out grant for that, though?
Yeah, no match.
No match.
But again, I want to make sure, this isn't, this isn't a short gap fill, until the Crisis Center opens. This is a, basically a two-year pilot, that we will use the Crisis Center as part of the approach, but we'll determine what other things we can be doing. And as Mike mentioned, you know, I know you get tied up, as we all do, in these acronyms. You've got the LEED program over here, you've got this grant over here. All of this really comes together to help us, because the, the LEEDs program is not actually a program, it's a process. It's an approach to solving problems. And what we hope to do is use this grant money to help us create the process that LEEDs will then move forward with. But with your approval, we will proceed to file that grant.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
You need to get further discussion?
My question, as I recall reading through the literature, part of that grant is for support personnel? Would you be looking to hire a project manager, or handling it through existing staff?
Actually, what we were, we're looking at is contracting with somebody to do those services for us.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Thomas?
That was my question.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from anybody? All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor, if we could, let's take a five-minute break.
All right. Thank you. Bye.[524.16]
And how we're going to be handling growth. So Greg, if you would.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening. Well, this is yet another session in our review of sewer. You may remember back in October that we reviewed the major components of our sewer collection and treatment systems. And we examined the capacity of those systems. And then we highlighted the challenges associated with the capacities of those systems. And we also during the session asked, why is this important? Why is sewer capacity important? And we answered the question that sewer capacity is needed to support the growth of the city and in turn, the growth of the city's tax base. And of course, this is no different than other city infrastructures such as streets, water, other types of utilities and services. So this meeting, since we highlighted those challenges, we're going to talk about potential solutions and we're going to make some recommendations. But as Richard said, before we do that, we're going to do a quick reminder of some of the things we talked about. And first and foremost was that we, when we talked about the major components of our systems, when it came to treatment facilities, what we said is that, of course, the city of Jacksonville has a wastewater treatment system, the land treatment system which we own. And then we also have capacity reserved in the advanced wastewater treatment plant at the Camp Lejeune Marine Corps Base, Marine Corps Base. And then also, we gave you some statistics relative to the collection and transmission system. Lots of miles of gravity sewers, lots of pump stations, and a fair amount of force main that those pump stations pump through. And we showed you a picture last time. And that picture basically showed you that the great majority of the sewer collected in the city is pumped out to the wastewater LTS. And then there's a small little basin over along Piney Green Road in the Piney Green area that discharges to a pump station that we own that in turn pumps through on Wassa lines and eventually ends up at the wastewater treatment plant on the base that's shown in the lower right-hand corner of that picture. And we talked about our wastewater treatment plant. And we said that that plant is permitted for nine million gallons per day. And we said that we're seeing on average 5.1 to 5.8 million gallons per day coming to the plant. And we said, well, you know, that sounds pretty good. But then we talked about wet weather. And we said, you know, when it rains, we can see flows that are on up there, as much as 15 million gallons in a single day. And when we're seeing those flows, at the same time, what's happening is we're typically not spraying in the, out in the fields. And so what happens? We start building up storage in those lagoons. And so when it comes to wastewater treatment, our challenge really is storage. And we basically said, we demonstrated that by showing you a graph of one of our lagoons, the blue line being, you know, the level in the lagoon. And we said that, you know, we from time to time in that prior year have gotten pretty close to our freeboard limit, the maximum amount that the state says we can let build up in that lagoon. And we even said that we emergency sprayed twice during the year when we thought that we were about to see more wet weather that could put us really close to the freeboard. And emergency spraying is something that's a, is a means of last resort. It's something that we certainly don't want to do. And it's certainly something that the state of North Carolina doesn't want us to do a whole lot of. They don't like that. And so, again, our challenge is storage. So what are, what are some of the options? One of the things that we've already been doing is, you know, trying to eliminate groundwater infiltration into our sewer pipes and manholes that make its way to the wastewater treatment facility. And also eliminating rainfall caused inflow. And we do that, of course, by examining our sewer system and looking for the points where those things come in and trying to eliminate those through such things as lining, lining the sewers, lining the manholes, or maybe replacing parts of the sewer or even replacing manholes. And we've done a number of these projects since 2007. And you may remember when we talked last time, we showed some statistics and we said that, you know, we think we are indeed making some progress. And so we are continuing on with I and I projects. And as a matter of fact, we have a project that we received bids on this Thursday. And this project involves raising the tops of manholes along the large diameter sewer outfall, the Henderson Trunk Sewer. Those manholes right now are pretty much near ground level. And then they're in low-lying areas that are subject to flooding during heavy rains. And so what happens is those manholes go underwater. And that means that water can run in around the lid into the manhole and, you know, add even more water to our, our system. And so this project is a project to raise those manholes so that the lids are up above the flood stage. And so, again, you know, we said last time that we, statistics are showing that we are making some headway. And so we think this is, I term it an alternative, but something that we should continue doing. And, you know, one of the reasons for doing this is as we do it, we are systematically looking at our sewer system. We're going out and we're, you know, televisioning those sewers. We're doing smoke testing, looking for, you know, holes that are near ground level. And when we find those, we eliminate, of course, we do projects to eliminate that inflow, infiltration. Of course, the con to that is, it's like everything, it requires work. It requires investigations. So we have to spend some money to do those investigations. Fortunately though, a lot of the televisioning that we do is done in-house. And we typically review those, those videos in-house and, you know, it's sort of a self-contained operation that we do here. Unfortunately, in recent years, what we're finding is we're not really finding any, you know, big things. We're not finding major holes where tons of water is rushing in. We're, we're finding little things. And so we're not hitting, you know, many, we're not hitting any home runs. What we're doing is we're hitting singles. And as we hit the singles, we sort of work our way around the bases and then we get home instead of one hit, we're home. And so we're, we're seeing incremental benefits as we go forward. But we think they're, they're worth it. A new alternative that we are, we bring to you is an alternative where we redirect a portion of our wastewater collected in our wastewater collection system to the treatment plant at the base. And to, you know, discuss that, I take you back to our, our prior meeting in which we said and we described how the collection system, the sewer collection system can be thought of being broken up into basins, or I think I termed it last time as bathtubs. Bathtubs where at the drain, we have a large pump station that receives all that flow from that bathtub and sends it on down the line eventually to the LTS. And so quite naturally, what we think is that the basin, it makes the most sense to redirect the basin closest to the base, to the base. And that would be the Bryn Mawr Basin, which has the Bryn Mawr Pump Station. And we think this is a viable alternative because you may recall that we have reserved at the treatment plant on the base, 1 million gallons worth of capacity. We're currently using less than 50,000 gallons of that capacity. In fact, we're using about 15,000 to 20,000 gallons worth of capacity. So it's sort of there for the taking. And under this concept, again, all the flow would go to the Bryn Mawr Pump Station. One of the ways that we could possibly get it there is to redirect that flow over to the gravity sewer that we own on Piney Green Road. And then from there, that sewer would work its way to our Popular Branch Pump Station. And then it would be pumped on to the base through the Anwassa lines that we talked about earlier. Another option might be to redirect it down Corbin Road and then hang a left at Lejeune Boulevard and send it towards the Piney Green Gate. And then from there on into the base. Pros to this is that it, you know, it redirects 1 and 1/2, 1.1 roughly million gallons of sewer away from the LTS. So quite rightly, it sort of lessens the amount of storage we have to do at the LTS. But the other thing is, in doing that, we're also redirecting about 21% of our collection system away from the LTS. And if you assume that our infiltration and inflow is evenly spread over our collection system, then think about that 15 MGD flow that I mentioned earlier during wet weather. We're knocking that down by about 21%. So, you know, we're, we're not seeing as much extraneous water going to the LTS. And another pro for this is that, you know, we've been to the base in the past to discuss additional capacity requests, you know, for our, our planning. And what we hear from the base is, well, you got a million gallons that, you know, you haven't even used yet. You need, come back to us when you're getting close. So if we redirect this flow from the Bryn Mawr Basin, then, you know, that is justification to go back and talk about future allocations for growth. And also, another benefit is that that treatment facility on the base is not operating very efficiently. They do have some issues with it. And those issues are caused by that that plant doesn't see a whole lot of flow. And it tends to see industrial flow, a higher strength wastewater, I think. And so what they, what they need for that plant to operate efficiently is more flow and what I'll call domestic type flow, flow that is largely wastewater that comes from homes, you know, in the city.
Are you going to get into the cost analysis of this?
Not this session.
Next chapter.
Well, my question will be, so you'll be prepared for it. We're paying X amount of dollars now to Anwassa.
Yes.
For the cost of that pump station over, until the debt is amortized completely, right?
Right.
I don't know how much that is, but it probably makes that 15,000 gallons we're flowing there pretty expensive.
It, it does.
So I'd like to see how that's going to compare, those dollars compared to the cost of redirecting Bryn Mawr, which we've talked about for years.
Right.
One other thing that I thought about in terms of your manholes, raising them. There was some discussion a while back about sealing those manholes, making them watertight with a pop-off valve for the methane gas. If it builds up, they would pop the valve off. Has that been explored as a feasible alternative to the cost of raising them all up?
Yes, and what, there's a couple of things we think about there is, you know, long-term, the long-term maintenance of those manholes, the watertight tops that you would put in there, and, you know, making sure they stay viable over time. The other thing is just being able to, you know, from a distance, see what's going on with the manhole. When the manhole's up above the flood stage, you know, it's visible, you can see what's going on and know what's going on with it. But we do have some that are sealed. You know, I can ask Pete his preference. I think his preference definitely is for the raised manholes from a maintenance standpoint.
Traveling public might disagree with that.
Well, these particular manholes, you have to remember, it's a long, it's, it's, it's an interceptor or outfall type sewer. And it's sort of down in a low, low spot, you know, running along a creek, sort of backing away, you know, from development. I won't say it's, you know, it can't be seen if you crane your neck and look, but it's, it's certainly not in, you know, they're not extremely visible.
They're normally not in the right of way.
No.
Or in the middle of the highway.
Right, these are not, no.
Yeah, these are not systems that we're actually talking about in the roadway surface. Because you're certainly right, we would not do something that would raise those and cause impacts with vehicles.
Right.
Greg, you know, something I'm thinking about here is what we pay for processing to the base. Obviously, they're going to bill us the gallons they receive.
Right.
I'm assuming. We're not going to get to tell them what we send. So we need to look at what we're paying and what we're charging. Because by the time you compute your, add in your I and I, you're, you're probably not going to be able to charge, you're not going to charge for everything because there's going to be additional water. Another thing that kind of bothers me a little bit right off initially is if you redirect 1 million gallons to the base, then you're going to start paying the base to process that 1 million gallons. But your savings at LTS are not going to be that amount. You know, LTS is a lot of fixed costs. I think the processing is almost ancillary.
Well, what it-
So I'm seeing, I'm seeing a higher cost.
Well, what I, you know, what I would say is, we're paying quite a large amount of money right now to reserve the capacity.
Right, I'm aware of the availability.
And so what happens is, as we, you know, we're paying, you know, as we start paying for treatment, the amount that we pay to reserve that capacity goes down. So there, yeah, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying a fee for reserving.
Right.
And so that fee goes down as we start putting sewer down the line to the base.
But also think of this, and we will be discussing this later. The other part is, when we look at the Anwassa system, they have the desire to expand their sewer opportunities. Many of their sewer opportunities or subdivisions that we will not ever annex, nor do we provide service to, run immediately adjacent to our force main. So by moving some of this capacity to the base, it opens up potential capacity also for us to cooperate with Anwassa for charging them for treating sewer. Now, the more you treat from any source, you still go back to the capacity standpoint of the lagoons. So I have never been able to work a Rubik's Cube. Many of you probably can't. But you almost have to think about where we're headed with our sewer system like a Rubik's Cube. Once you get one side with all the colors, you look at the other sides and suddenly realize none of those colors work. So what we're trying to do is work through a series of options that will help us all explore where do we really go? And so this is, this is one side of that Rubik's Cube that could potentially help us. Because as we know, we're currently paying Anwassa a significant amount of money for a pipe that's dry. Now, the other part is, whatever we send to the base, we're going to have to negotiate a fee for the processing and not the full base fee. The full base fee today is just like our fee. It's for treatment and collection. But if what we're sending them is not part of their collection system, then we're going to have to look at negotiating a treatment cost. So there, there are a lot of components of this. And we're just beginning to, to explore some of these. And the points y'all are both, or everybody's making are going to be very critical as we walk this path together.
What I just want to see is, we make a shift and all we've done is made some capacity available, but we're paying more for what we already had.
Yes. But on the other hand, think of it also this way. There, you may find that you have to increase the cost less by doing this option than increasing the cost to do a different option. For example, the capacity, I have said to you all before, we talk about having a 9 million gallon plant. You don't. Right now, we are, for all practical purposes, not according to our permits, but the reality is, our storage basins tell us that we're only going to be able to get 6 and 1/2, take any number you want to, 6 and 1/2, 7 million gallons. So if we're ever going to get to 9, we're going to have to expand those lagoons. And that's not going to be free either. Now, if we can have you just a moment, we'd like to show you some of the research we've done about possibly expanding those basins. We're not asking you tonight to say, go by land. But again, think of a Rubik's Cube. You get one side, and then you get another side, there are a lot of issues, a lot of issues here. So any questions before Greg moves on?
Just one quick note about what we're discussing, which everybody, we don't have the actual numbers today, but thinking back some years ago when we actually started these conversations, the whole intent of gaining that 1 MGD was for exactly what we're talking about today. And Jerry, you'll remember this, because we were talking about diverting Bryn Mawr over to the base at some point to relieve pressure at Bryn Mawr. So it was always the intent that we would use that 1 MGD to relieve pressure at the LTS or throughout our system. We just haven't used that. And at that time, when those numbers were brought forward, I know things have changed, but it was beneficial. So as that being an option, I think when you look at the numbers, because of what we're actually paying to reserve it and what we'd actually gain in relief and pressure and what it would cost to replace that 1 MGD at the LTS, I think the numbers will show that it's beneficial to do it that way. Because we have looked at this before. When we did our initial planning on getting the 1 MGD, that was sort of the, the driving factor. But at that particular time, it was Bryn Mawr Pump Station that we were really focused on, if you recall, so.
Well, again, one of the things, one of the factors in building this Rubik's Cube is obviously going to be the rate model. Because we also know that we can only charge so much. You know, if you get to be too expensive, growth stops. So a lot of things stop.
Okay. Greg?
Well, so we can continue on with a few of the other cons. I hear what you're saying, but if you were not to divert Bryn Mawr, then the capacity that would have been there for the Piney Green area goes away. In other words, you know, the sewer line runs up Piney Green Road and it's there for Piney Green. And so any development that would occur in the Piney Green area, once we take that 1 million gallon, would result in us needing to ask for additional capacity. But recall what I said just a few moments ago. What the base says is, come talk to us when, you know, it's needed. And I also talked about that there is benefit to the base in us getting that flow to them sooner than later in terms of the efficient operation of their wastewater treatment plant. So we likely need to also ask right up front for about another 100,000 gallons because the, the flow from the Piney Green area is about 1.1 versus 1 million. And again, we have capacity reserved in that range or at 1 million. Another alternative that we are planning to look at with your blessing is adding disposal capacity near the LTS. We have sort of done some what I'll call 10,000-foot level looking in proximity to our irrigation fields. And we've seen some land that we think might lend itself to spray irrigation or possibly even rapid infiltration. But again, this is very 10,000-foot level, so it's not a given. What we need to do is, you know, start, you know, zooming down and doing investigations to see if it is, the land is truly suited to spray irrigation and/or rapid infiltration.
Now, what's rapid infiltration?
Rapid infiltration is, Anwassa is doing that at their plant out at Richlands. Basically, they treat their wastewater, they send it to a pond, and it infiltrates through the base of the pond into the underlying ground.
So it's basically percolation?
It's percolation. And it, it would result in, for the same amount of land area, would result in a higher rate of disposal than would a irrigation system that covers the same amount of land area. So if it turned out that there was indeed land that, that was suitable for that, and it proved that, you know, it was economically reasonable to get wastewater, you know, to that area, that increased, would result in an increased rate of disposal. More irrigation and/or infiltration means less storage. And it's possible that we could even, you know, maybe entertain the thought of increasing our permitted capacity. Don't know. Those are things to look at. Con to that, of course, is that it requires more, we'd have more land to manage. And if you're talking in terms of rapid infiltration, the wastewater that we would send to a rapid infiltration basin would require a higher level of treatment, which means we'd have to spend money on treatment units to clean up the wastewater a little bit more. So when it comes to our storage issue, what our recommendation at the moment is that, is that we continue forward with, you know, our ongoing I and I projects. We try to do an I and I project based upon the things we find about every other year. We recommend that we begin looking at the Bryn Mawr redirection of sewer. That would involve, of course, you know, doing some analysis like you were talking about early, revisiting those numbers to see that it did make sense. And then we would like to, you know, look closer at these areas that we think might hold potential for irrigation or infiltration. And we would, of course, come back to you and report to you as we are doing this work to, you know, of course, get your blessing based upon the findings to, to either keep going or stop. And right now, we're thinking that we would probably be doing that around the latter part of the year, the first of next year.
And let me stress, we're not asking in these recommendations, we're not asking you to say redirect Bryn Mawr. What we're saying is, we need to, to study the various issues around it. And we want you to know that we, that we would like to study those things. We don't like to ever surprise you. The goal here is to find out what are the true financial costs of Bryn Mawr? What is the potential on number three for securing more land? So it's not, we're going to buy more land. It's not, we're going to redirect Bryn Mawr. It's, all we're asking at this point is, for your blessing, for us to study this to determine what is the real potential and what are the real costs.
How often during the given year are we critical in terms of exceeding, or close to exceeding our storage space requiring emergency spraying?
I think the best person to answer that is Pete.
Oh, well, in 2017, we emergency sprayed twice. Once was severe weather event and the other was just because the, the rain and the lack of being able to irrigate caused the lagoons to rise to the freeboard level. I think, if I remember correctly, I think we've been four, four times in the last three years, we've emergency sprayed.
But that's not a one-day event.
No, sir. That, use, emergency spraying usually takes anywhere from, from two to four weeks to get down to the level that we feel comfortable with. And then obviously, you know, because we saturate the ground, we have to slow it down and let the ground recover. And then we'll ease back into it with like a modified spray schedule.
If you look at-
Probably an engineering analysis, but again, the cost benefit in terms of raising the height of the existing lagoons, the dams.
Yes, sir. That would be, I'd have-
We did that once before, I think, in terms of saving some money.
We did that with the expansion pump.
Yes, we did.
But I would have to yield to Greg on that one.
Have to look into it. But, you know, in answering your question also, if you look at the, the figure, you know, there from April through, I don't know, June, and, you know, we were bouncing around in that storage lagoon within a foot to a half a foot of our- within a foot to a half a foot of our permitted freeboard. In other words, we were getting pretty close to, you know, having a permit violation.
We've been within a foot to a foot and a half in the last month in two of the lagoons.
Well, and the other thing to also remember is, this is, this is a picture of what's happening on your system today. If the city is going to grow, we have to be in a position, you know, we have to be proactive. Y'all lived the days when we did not have any capacity. And because of that, a major subdivision, which I won't mention, but it's just the other side of Ramsey Road, was built on a private system. Those 400 houses, or whatever it is that's there, could have been inside the city if we had the capacity. They're not. They never will come into the city. So, you know, part of our analysis is not just what's happening today, but if we're going to expand, and I will say to you again, you know, the cost of government always creeps up. We're facing in the budget this year, electricity cost. And when you look at the amount of electricity that we spend, I mean, it's millions of dollars. Well, Duke Power is saying about a 7%. You put 7% on several million dollars, that's real money. It's got to come from somewhere. So if your, if your tax base is not expanding because you don't have the physical infrastructure to accommodate growth, then you're in one of the death spirals of too many municipalities. And that is, expenses go up, the tax base isn't going up, the taxes have to go up, people move out, it's a death spiral. And part of our responsibility to you is to point out the things that will keep us out of that death spiral. Now, they're all expensive. I mean, I can tell you, anybody who thinks that any of this, and I know y'all don't think this, but any citizen who thinks that life can just go on without increases, and we're not saying there's going to be a rate increase this year, we're way away from that. What I'm saying, though, is you have to be investing in order to have a future. So all of these studies that we're recommending, hopefully, will give us more answers and help us decide, is the best solution A, or is the best solution something that we haven't even, haven't even thought about?
I have a question. Just for educational purposes, if the plant was designed for nine MGD, was it just the lagoons weren't designed to meet the needs of nine MGD? Or is it weather, or where's the, where's the gap in what was designed and what's actually happening today based on what we have? Because it seems to me if we're maxing out, but we've always been told that we have a potential of a nine MGD facility, which in turn would lead us to believe that the lagoons would match-
It's the, it's, it's-
The numbers.
It's the weather. You know, we've had an extremely wet year. But another thing that, as I've been working on this, that I didn't even realize was that the state of North Carolina has come in over, I don't know the how, how, you know, the timeframe, but they've had us cap roughly 2,100 sprinklers. And 2,100 sprinklers puts out a fair amount of wastewater.
And we have 21,000 sprinklers out there. So one-tenth of ours are currently capped because of ponding?
Yes, ponding, topographical concerns about, you know, it being located to a topographical area where it's going to go down the slope and make its way to the water course. And so, you know, I've been, you know, I'm like you, what does that mean? I've actually, I've not had time to finish, but I've actually been doing, trying to do what's called a water balance to see what that means, you know, from a theoretical standpoint. Because I just, I didn't know that. You know, I talked with William, I've been talking with William about this issue as we've been thinking about, you know, what do we do? And that's something that just came, came out of the blue for me.
Now, William is William Brown. He's the person who operates. But let's also look at it this way. The, the theoretic only becomes realistic. In theory, that property can hold so much. And I would say to you, look at the work that Pete and the crews have done out there in daylighting, in control burning, in forestry management. Y'all have made, or the city, through your leadership, has made significant strides in expanding the capacity, the realistic capacity out there because of all of the daylighting and all of the control burns that you've been doing. I mean, if we were back where we were when I came here eight years ago, it would be dismal.
Kevin O'Connor would be here.
And by the way, Kevin called the other day, and he, he sent y'all his regards from Virginia. But again, I don't want anybody to think that anybody has misled anybody. It's a dynamic system. Y'all have made tremendous strides in managing the forest out there. You will recall when you went out there, when Kevin did talk to us about all the death, all the dying trees. You do not find that out there today. I mean, the only reason why a tree may die out there today is because of infestation by insects, not because of drowning, like we were. Let's continue with the next part.
All right. Well, the next part, of course, are sewer collection system challenges. Again, there are your statistics of regarding our sewer collection system, and you see the map of the sewer broken down by basins. Last time we talked to you, you know, we talked about the basins. And then we said of all the basins you saw there, that there are four with the higher growth potential. And of those four, there were two, are two, that are experiencing current development pressure. They're, you know, they, they, their Western Boulevard, you know, passes through those basins. And when it came to the Henderson Basin, we showed you an outline of that basin. And we showed you that there are a fair number of tracks within the developed portion of the basin that are, of course, available for development. And we showed you some other tracks that we thought were longer-term development-type tracks. And what we said was that, you know, if all that developed, we could potentially be looking at roughly another 700,000 gallons per day, you know, coming into our system from that basin. And we did the same thing for the Brookview Basin. We showed you the undeveloped parcels, the areas we thought, you know, were longer-range development. And we said if all that came to fruition, you know, we'd be looking at roughly, possibly another 1.1 million gallons per day of sewer. And so since that time, you know, we showed you some, a little bit of modeling and showed you concerns related to development. Since that time, we've gone, we've done a lot of modeling, extensive, comprehensive modeling. And what we did was, we didn't just plug in those, you know, development, new development in those basins. We plugged in new development throughout the city. And what you see here is a map with the green being existing areas, and the yellow, and I guess I'll call it salmon, being future development. This is what we sort of see right now as build out of the city. So the yellow and the salmon are, you know, stuff to be, that develops over time and ultimately gets built out to that level. And what our modeling says, that if, if the city develops to that degree, and you saw, you know, maps like this last time, we, we could have some issues. And those issues exist in the form of those red little circles, which mean manholes, the sewer's full, and the manhole, sewer's getting near the top of the manhole. The yellow circles mean that the sewers are full, and there's wastewater up in the manhole, but it's, 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 it's no closer than two feet to the top of the manhole. And the purple circles mean that those are manholes that overflow. So that's, you know, the, the map is pretty, pretty lit up. And I forgot to mention, the rectangles are pump stations. Red rectangles mean pump stations that are pretty much, you know, just barely getting by. They are at capacity, and wastewater's getting up into, you know, their, their, their wet well. And the yellow ones mean that, you know, they're, they're a little better off, but they're at capacity. And so through the modeling, what we did was, we said, you know, this is, this is the problems when we have full development. What do we need to do to take care of this? And what you see here are the projects that the model predicts we would need to do if we continued to funnel all of our sewer through our core sewer system. And you can see there's quite, quite a lot of those projects. It involves upsizing sewers, it involves upsizing pump stations, and there's even, at the main pump station, it involves adding a, an additional storage tank to take care of those wet weather surges of flow. But you'll remember, and we've talked about this for years, that we have a project design called the Parkwood or Western Regional Sewer System that involves constructing a new pump station that pumps through a new force main, that being the dotted line you see there, out to the land treatment system. And then it would receive flow through a large trunk sewer that starts at the, at Western Boulevard, right at Williamsburg, where Williamsburg plantation, or Williamsburg Parkway intersects it. And so that larger circled area is the, essentially the part that we have designed right now. The smaller circle would be a future development phase where we would build a pump station somewhere in the neighborhood of Gateway North. And we would intercept the flow coming from the Commons Pump Station and additional flow coming from the north of Western Boulevard and direct it through that trunk sewer and on out to the LTS. And so what happens when you plug that, those projects in versus what you just saw? The projects that are shaded in light gray go away. So that's, you know, that's the alternative to trying to route everything through your core system. And additionally, we're back to the Brenmar redirection. When we do, if we were to do that, what's predicted to go away are three projects you see that are, that are grayed out and arrows are pointing to them. And in fact, I find, you know, I mentioned earlier that 21% of the collection system goes, is redirected. And, you know, that could possibly mean that 21% of the extraneous flow gets redirected away from our LTS. And I think that's proven out by the, the one project that goes away that is, is encircled by that small circle at the main pump station, which I mentioned earlier, which is a project to add a storage tank. If we direct, redirect Brenmar, that storage tank, the need for that storage tank goes away. And I attribute that to a lesser wet weather flow going through the main pump station. So what are our conclusions? Well, Richard's already said it. Our, our system is dynamic, it's ever-changing. And it changes because of changes in our system, as it ages out, as development occurs, things change. And, but, in, in, in fact, we have done this type of comprehensive modeling twice before. And each time, the recommendations change a little bit, but the recommendations are pretty much the same. Significant improvements are needed over time to basically accommodate growth that occurs over time. But I think what you've seen here is that, you know, we have, you know, multiple implementation approaches to deal with that. You know, Western trunk sewer versus sending everything through the core system, redirecting Brenmar. And even interestingly, one of the things that we're seeing through our latest projections is that, you know, we had, we were thinking that we were going to build the, the Western Regional Sewer System project from basically Western Boulevard all the way to the LTS in one bite. What we're tending to see is that we may be able to phase that. And a little more work on our part to see if we can do that, but we're thinking we may be able to take smaller bites at that project.
Over a longer period of time.
Over a longer period of time. And so the other conclusion that we have is that, you know, development is occurring continuously. And so the timeframe for implementation of these projects needs to be continuous also, sort of a step ahead of development. And to that end, what we're proposing in this year's CIP is to throw, you know, to, to put money towards that investigation we were talking about for the Western, or for the Brenmar redirection project. We're also talking about starting at least the first phase of the Western or Parkwood Regional Sewer System in FY '20. And then we have projects that just continue on from there that we would adjust, you know, as we keep an eye on development and progress we make towards, you know, I&amp;I and other improvements. So our recommendations, when it, and that is supposed to not be wastewater storage issue, but for our, our collection system challenges, is, you know, what we're doing right now. Plan for future growth. You know, keep an eye on it, talk about it, and make sure we're all on the same page. Again, we are talking about adjusting, as I've just mentioned, the timing of our improvements based upon how development occurs. And again, once again, we're talking about starting the planning for the Brenmar redirection this coming fiscal year, and then getting the Western Regional Sewer System after that.
In a series of phases.
In a series of phases.
But again, all of this is dependent upon additional studies to determine the cost and the feasibility. What we would, what our next chapter, you know, you have to think of this as a book. This is not like a movie where you, you know, you pay your $2. I guess they're not $2 movies anymore. Tell how long it's been since I go to the movies. But instead of paying your $10 and the movie's over at the end of $2 hours, this is a book. Every chapter, we try to give you more education. And every chapter, we're actually educating ourselves better. The, several chapters ago, we were, got to build the, what I call the Northwest Passage. We got to build that thing, and we got to build it now. The more analysis we do, as Greg says, shows, we do need to build it. We may not need to build it quite as fast as we thought we needed to build it. And obviously, all of those things have to do with your rates. Rates are directly connected to what you're spending with your capital. So we're not asking you tonight to authorize any specific approach other than to say, okay, let's spend some money and study the Brenmar alternative. Let's spend some money to look at the capacity issues at the LTS. Let's determine if there are other approaches. Because I will tell you, you know, this time last year, you were facing a staff that was saying, let's get out for bonds, let's go $34 million in debt, let's get the Northwest Passage built. Because of the extra studies that you asked us to do, we're not there at this point. We do believe it has to be built at a point in time. But the more of these types of studies that we do, we're able to, you know, peel the onions back one layer at a time to better understand. But at the end of the day, I would be remiss as your manager not to, my job is to always make sure that you're in the position to grow, if that's what you want. And we cannot, if you're going to grow, you cannot find yourself in the position we did a decade or so ago when growth wanted to occur and we weren't ready for it. So that's kind of where we are with this chapter. Not a lot of smiles around the table.
Well, I think, you know, I think it's a good idea to keep your analysis going because I think one of the things that makes me reluctant about a lot of these is what we were told may come to fruition by our investment in Piney Green Road. I mean, to me, we have sunk $7 million in pipe, $250,000 a year in availability for growth that has not occurred, and have no reasonable expectations of any time in the future to occur.
Well, actually, I apologize. Go ahead.
But anyway, I mean, that's just, that's my take at this point, from what I've seen. You know, it started this way, and it was going to be this way, and now we've got what we got. So, and you're talking about selling- So, and you're talking about selling sewer to out-of-city residents, so, I mean, we need to sell sewer, I agree. But anyway, that's just one of the things that kind of sticks with me. Also, I haven't heard any good things about the Richlands Treatment System. I'm not sure that's something.
That's not something we're going to comment on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, emulate either or, so, anyway.
There may not be good things.
Yeah.
Two other things, though, relative to growth. D.R. Horton that bought the, what was that, 300? The Vineyards. What was it also called? Cypress. They are back at the development table, talking about moving forward with that development. And we also know through, if you remember the Koenig Development down on Piney Green, we also know that developers are currently looking at that. Because, you know, the housing model is, you know, it just disappeared, and it's gotten a whole lot better.
Good, that's good news. You know, Horton was trying to sell that property for several years, so.
Sometimes I think we're like a dog chasing a snail. We need growth so we have an increase in revenues. We need an increase in revenues to take care of the cost of growth.
Well, also.
But then again, if you don't do it, you find yourself back in a position where the city was in '91, '92, when the state slapped a moratorium on you because you weren't ready for growth, and no growth then occurs.
I'll also remind you of comments I've made in the past in the budget. You're not ever going to, to make money off of residential growth in this community. You know, I looked at the, at the statistics out at Emerald Isle just recently, and you can ride down the road in Emerald Isle, which obviously is an island and it's a beach, and you got a million-dollar tax base there, and $750,000 tax base here, and $500,000 tax base there. You don't find that in Jacksonville. We are a community where the tax base is built between $50,000 and $200,000. And you've seen those statistics before. Out of our 13,000 plus or minus houses, the vast majority are assessed at 150 or less. Over half of them are at 100 or less. Residential growth is not ever going to pay for itself. What pays for itself is commercial growth. And the importance of the connection between residential and commercial is this. You don't build another Walmart unless you've got rooftops. You don't build another grocery store unless you've got the rooftops. So it's almost like being in business where you have lost leaders in order to make money over here. And so, you know, Mr. Bittner is right, you have to be careful that you don't chase your tail and go bankrupt. But at the same time, you know, the lost leader does bring in the commercial, because the commercial is where we balance our budgets every day.
We know.
So this is going to be in the capital improvement plan to do this study?
Well, yes, and that's a great entree to the next part. Deanna is with us to talk about capital improvements. Now, I know that took a little while. If you'd like to take a five-minute stretch, you want to just go right on in. Okay? Are you stretching?
Let's go, shall we go, which one? Are we stretching or going right into it?
Sammy? Let's go into it.
Okay, we're into it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayhoun Council. We're going to continue talking about books, and more appropriately, we have presented you the FY '19 Proposed Capital Improvement Plan. And you should have already received these uploaded to your iPads. We've also have uploaded it to the city's webpage for our citizens to start looking at, at the proposed projects. And so just as a reminder, what is a capital improvement plan? The capital improvement plan are major non-reoccurring investments that exceed at least $50,000 in cost, require over 12 months to complete, and that have a useful life of more than five years. And again, the capital improvement plan, it's a planning document. It's a financial document that helps us plan, it shows estimated expenditures, and identifies probable sources of financing, and it also provides accountability. It evaluates, prioritizes, and schedules our projects, and then it communicates our ongoing and long-term projects, some of which that Greg had talked about previously. So there's some new things in the CIP this year. So you might have noticed, if you've had a chance to look at it, we've actually expanded the planning years from five years to 10 years. And part of that is because of the recent changes with the system development fees. And with that, we've added new classification labels, or what we would call is like descriptors. So it might be where rehabilitation, we also have now enhancement, new construction, new growth. Again, that kind of tied that back to the system development fees.
Which are also tied directly back to the new state law that mandates that we do our system development fees on a 10- to 20-year view, not a five-year view.
And if I can add, that is available, the analysis is available on our website, and we've actually have a advertisement in the Daily News today that it is available for the public to review and comment, and it'll be available for 45 days.
And just a quick sidebar. Remember, in order to adopt the new system development fees, the new state law has specific steps that you have to go through. One of those was hiring an independent consultant, which we did, and you've seen the results. Based upon the presentation to you, we made certain adjustments. The document was then brought back to us. There are steps in the law such as advertising that is now available for 45 days. Then we go through a public hearing process that allows people to suggest changes. Then we go through an adoption process. So we're not looking at adopting the new system development fees until you, till you adopt the budget, which is May or early June. Back to you.
Thank you. We've also added a new, what we're calling, department or a new section, and that's related to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And as Anthony has briefed you many times, they are planning to do numerous projects, and the first five most pressing projects have been included in your CIP. And this is attributable to, at this point, very, when we put this together, was very preliminary numbers using their cost estimating, looking at the potential impact. And they will be refined as we move forward and we get, the plans are more concrete. So we normally don't get that level of detail until about 65%. So we're trying to be proactive. We're anticipating what potential impacts might be there, so then we can start planning for it accordingly.
Now, let me, let me give another comment on that. The DOT road projects, where we have water and sewer lines in the road, they require us to either relocate or make sure that those lines are in good condition. And what you're going to see in the CIP, we specifically have set that up to show you that there are millions of dollars that we're going to have to spend this year, not this year, but in the next several years, because of road projects. And those are dollars we would not have spent on that same time schedule. But the DOT says, if you want that road paved, we're not going to let you dig it up five years out of the paper. So it has caused us to move several projects higher, and they are expensive projects. As you have heard, in, what did we say, March or April, we start Henderson. But again, that's just an example. If you want Henderson resurfaced, you got to do your water and sewer lines. So we are going to start showing in the CIP every year those projects that are the result of DOT projects.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
And as a, as a note to that, a lot of these are just dealing with crossings or conflicts. They're putting in a catch basin or stormwater pipe or something. So it's not even that we're going out and replacing a whole section of line. Many of these projects are actually, we're having to go out and pay for a conflict which doesn't replace the whole line. And that project would be much larger and much, you know, more expensive in scope. So even the cost you're looking at is a fraction of what it would be if we were going to replace an entire length of line.
So just, and does the information then on the DOT projects relate to a city project? Is it so tabbed or something?
What we've done is, so these projects are attributable to specific NC DOT projects. So that would be like the Gum Branch widening at that intersection, or taking 24 to 17, all the Western Boulevard improvements. So anytime they have a planned project, and that their proposed design impacts our utilities, of which we are within their right-of-way, state law says we have to pay for it unless it's within an existing easement, or that we can prove that we had prior rights. And so we have actually recently created a new project team with city staff to kind of be proactive in evaluating and looking at these plans, both from a utilities perspective, doing deed research, et cetera. And so it's lots of constant communication, but these projects are a result of their needs. And then unfortunately, our utilities are within their easement, and they're impacted. And then as such, we have sent them a request to go ahead and include any proposed design and construction with their project. It actually helps us because they go on a much faster timeline than we could. And so there is some additional costs because of that, the overhead, other than the exact direct cost that DOT would provide, but it actually works out better because we have one contractor, one designer, doing the project from start to finish. Because if not, excuse me, if not, then we would have to get, we would have to design and construct a project with their rough concept in mind, get it done, and out of their way before they can even do their project. And so, and then as we've stated, the plans that we have now, some projects have been accelerated up, you know, they had a concept planned, and they've already been pushed forward ahead, two years ahead, five years ahead. So, you know, we just can't keep up with that timeframe.
But as we go through the budget this year, we are going to be going through these projects in detail with you. And as we go through those projects, we will show you the category that is directly related to NC DOT.
Yes, sir. And actually, and we're going to talk about that more in next month with you guys. And then also, we've changed, in the past, we had our annual appropriation for our sidewalk installations, and we renamed that to pedestrian improvements, and that better reflects our desire to do sidewalks, trailheads, or not trailheads, but trails, et cetera. So we, we thought it was more appropriate to change that classification. And so looking at the expenditures by department over the 10-year period, don't know what happened there, but the largest two categories by department, you'll have public services, which is this category, whoops. Let's go back. The largest pie that you see, the dark blue, is public services. And then you'll see, let's see, recreation and parks is the top one. And so the public services is related to the utility projects and preparing us for future growth. And as you've previously heard from recreation and parks, we're growing. And so we've identified some very robust projects in the next couple of years for recreation. And then likewise, on the funding source, you've got the two biggest ones, which is Water and Sewer Fund at 28%, and the Revenue Bond Spot with 25.9. And both of those are attributable mainly to those two areas that I just mentioned. And so our next steps, as I just mentioned, that we'll be going through the CIP in a lot more detail in April, and we're actually trying to tie that presentation together with Anthony to talk about specifically those DOT projects we mentioned. We're here, so any additional information that we could provide other than that next CIP project update, any workshops that are needed, we can look at any adjustments and project schedules that we need to make. And then as always, it's adopted with the budget every year by June 30th. So we'll have much more to talk about next time.
I only have one question in regards to Powell Bill funding. Look through some of the projects that are in here, all good projects. The Powell Bill funding as, in the CIP, which is related to a lot of the downtown project, so are we proposing to shift all those dollars to that project for this, for the '19 period? Is that?
To be quite frank with you, I don't remember whether it's the '19 period or the '20 period.
Yeah, I don't know how the cycle goes.
It's in that time period. And the answer, the answer there is, the paving is going to be the last thing we do.
Right.
So whatever year everything else has been completed, then, then that paving would be from the Powell Bill.
It's in entirety, right?
That's correct.
So what about the sidewalk schedule? Does that impact the current sidewalk schedule that we have?
I think, Dr. Wood, if you don't mind, I think that...
Not the sidewalk as related to downtown, but our over...
Just the finding, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that was one of the things that perhaps either yourself or maybe council had asked as part of the CIP update was to provide alternatives, that if we wanted to go forward with the downtown project as proposed, then what projects might we have to shift or evaluate? And so we'll, we'll be having those discussions with staff to come up with those options.
But the, every year, we set aside $100,000 to work on sidewalks. So the concept would be to concentrate that in the downtown area, year after year after year, until it's finished, or decide, no, that's not the way we're going to fund them, and use that sidewalk money somewhere else. Fortunately, the work that Anthony and Public Works and y'all have all done together, we have installed a significant amount of sidewalks over the last three or four years on the Gum Branch area around Jacksonville High School, and of course, down on Western in front of Jones Onslow and the hospital. So we're making a lot of good progress to get sidewalks.
It might be good to maybe have, you know, a little recap as part of that presentation so that we know that we're not just shifting, you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else there?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, the, the next thing, and we want to be flexible with you because we recognize we've already been at this two hours. We can either discuss the MSSD changes this evening, or we can postpone them till the next meeting. These are not critical. At a point in time, we need to be asking you, do you want to adopt them or not? Because while we are looking at development, there's not a single item that you're going to discuss in the MSSD that's going to hold up a project. So the question is, are you available for roughly 30 more minutes tonight, or would you prefer this to be two weeks away at your next workshop?
I've been waiting all evening for it, so.
Well, with your, with your approval. Now, the first thing that I had to ask myself was, a refresher, what does the MSSD actually stand for? Because in my younger days, which was like last week, by the way, that was subdivision regulations. But Greg, you got to go back one. Oh, it's on here, okay. It's the Manual of Specifications, Standards, and Designs. So it's your subdivision regulations, okay? You will recall that we had an ad hoc development committee. They said there were a lot of reasons. Eight of those had to do with our standards. So we've looked at those, and we're going to discuss them with the recommendation that if you're comfortable, that you actually vote tonight to amend your MSSD. If you're not comfortable, we'll postpone the vote. Greg, you're on.
Thank you. Yes, we're here to talk about a street-related revisions to the MSSD. And as Dr. Wood have said, these revisions came out of the work of the ad hoc committee. You may remember back in September that we said, one of the things that the committee said was a, I guess the word is impediment to development in Jacksonville, is the cost of constructing streets in Jacksonville due to our requirements. And so we discussed recommendations during the last meeting, and those recommendations are essentially to make revisions to the certain street standards that would make our requirements more conducive to development while continuing our highest standards for street construction. And so tonight, you're being asked to do two things, and that is, of course, again, consider adoption of revisions to the MSSD, but also modify adoption of Appendix D of the NC Fire Code. That adoption was done by our prior council a number of years ago. And the reason that we need to do that is so that there will not be a conflict when it comes to dimensional requirements of the widths of streets and cul-de-sacs and things like that. And so there is a resolution that is an attachment to the agenda item. And so here is a figure taken from our MSSD. This is a cross-section of a street. And the revisions that you're being asked to consider tonight basically break into two things. First being the actual construction of the street itself, the pavement, the rock that underlies it, maybe the asphalt base that's underneath that. underlies it, maybe the asphalt base that's underneath that asphalt surface course. And you're also being asked to consider revisions to width requirements to certain streets, primarily, well, essentially, to residential streets. And so, what we'll start with is the minor or local residential streets. Right now, those are typically the streets that are out in front of your house that don't have a lot of traffic on them. Right now, the requirement for the width of those streets is 31 feet, measured from the back of the concrete curb and gutter on one side of the street to the other side of the street. We're proposing to keep that in the MSSD and call that our standard residential requirement, our standard requirement for a local street. But what we're proposing to do is introduce the concept of an alternative-designed local street, which would allow someone to make the width of that street 26 feet. And in doing that, we would match the NC DOT standard, which, you know, the ad hoc committee seemed to believe was a reasonable standard that they're already doing, and they thought it, you know, would work well in the city. But unlike NC DOT, in order to be able to do that, you have to provide off-street parking to be able to qualify for that 26 width. And that off-street parking can either be via the driveways, the houses in the subdivision, or by separate areas that are established by the developer for parking. And again, this requires modification of Appendix D, because, so we won't be in conflict with the width requirement of Appendix D. Appendix D requires just a slightly wider street than what we're proposing, but again, our street matches the NC DOT standard. When it comes to collector streets, those are the streets that the smaller streets dump out onto and has a bit more traffic. Right now, the MSSD just has a generic collector street. What we're proposing to do is to break that street into two categories, residential and non-residential. And what we will do is, we're proposing to do, is take the width from the current 37-foot requirement for the residential collector street to 35 feet, but leave the requirement for the non-residential street at 37 feet.
Can you give us an example of, you know, for example, Doris? Is Doris a residential collector?
I would say it is, yes.
Okay. Can you give us an example of a non-residential collector?
Commerce Street through the park.
Yes, Commerce Street through-
Commerce behind Home Depot.
Yes, that would be a non-residential.
Williamsburg Parkway, the commercial section.
Are you changing the right-of-way reg-
No, we're not.
You're keeping the same right-of-way requirement?
Right.
So, that if a widening is necessary in future years, you'll still have it?
Yes. And I believe our right-of-way standards already match NC DOT, too. We're also proposing to add a category of street called Boulevard, and you can see there, we have a width requirement associated with that. And then, currently, our MSSD breaks major thoroughfares into two different types of major thoroughfares. And what we're proposing to do is eliminate one of those and sort of keep the standard for a, I'll call it, a basic major thoroughfare, one that doesn't have, you know, a lot of center-turn lanes, medians, or anything like that, because we believe that when it comes to those types of major thoroughfares, they're going to be very specific to the traffic volume being carried, the corridor through which it's going. And so, we'll be working with those developers and designers that will be proposing those types of major thoroughfares.
Okay, Carolina Forest Boulevard.
Right. And so, what you see, and there's an attachment to your agenda, is the table from the MSSD that lists those streets and lists the width requirements, the width requirements for those types of streets. And so, that is the revised standard. We're also proposing to change the diameter of our cul-de-sacs, the minimum diameter of our cul-de-sacs, from 96 feet to 80 feet. We have, quite honestly, talked with the fire department about this, and they're comfortable with this change. And like the street width, this requires the modified, the resolution modifying the adoption of Appendix D, so that Appendix D dimensional requirements won't be in conflict with our new standard.
But this, the right-of-way does change.
Is it to turn a sanitation truck around?
Yes, sir. It's also sufficient to turn around our quints and our ladder trucks. We have modeled this, and they will work on here. Now, I will also say, if cars are parked on the cul-de-sac, then it becomes difficult. But this is one area that, if you go to some of our cul-de-sacs and you look at the sea of asphalt of 96 feet, it's an awfully large cul-de-sac.
Yes. And we pay stormwater fees on that. Pay ourselves stormwater fees.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Saving money.
Yeah. When it comes to pavement construction revisions, we currently have a requirement in the MSSD that we place something called engineering fabric at the base of the pavement structure. We see that as unnecessary, given our other requirements related to construction of that pavement. So, we're not making that a requirement, but we are in our design guide saying that that can be used in an option, and if you do use that, then you may get credit for some of the stone. You may be able to reduce the thickness of stone that you put under your street. What we are also planning to do is to retain what we call a, our standard pavement sections. We will have a table that will list, you know, the standard requirement for a street, if you just want to go to a table. And these, this is the revised version. What you see there is, for a great number of these streets, these requirements represent a slightly less beefy pavement structure, so consequently, less costly. But having said that, what you need to know is that we worked with a geotechnical consultant to come up with those requirements. And the way, the geotechnical consultant basically looked around the city and said, okay, what are your worst soils? What we're going to do is design a pavement based upon the assumption that the street's going to be constructed on the worst soils. And if, you know, that is the result. So, even though it's a, there, some of these are less beefier than the last time, they are structurally made to last.
On the worst soils.
On the worst soils, yes. But, that's the worst soils. What we're also proposing to do is introduce a new procedure into our street design guide that makes it easier to propose an alternative section, propose alternative sections to the standard sections. And under this procedure, what a developer or engineer would have to do is basically say, and prove, that we have better soils than that. And if we have, you have better soils than that, good to excellent soils, then this is the street section that can be used that is even less beefier than what you saw there, and consequently, less costly. And again, we worked with our geotechnical consultant to come up with those particular sections, too.
So, again, if you wind up with a better base by Mother Nature, you don't have to put as much into the road that you're building. But if you've got bad soil, then you've got to meet the full standard.
So, that's essentially the changes that we proposed for the MSSD. There are some other minor, I'd call them sort of minor changes made throughout the street design guide. One of the things that I think about is, there isn't allow, there's another procedure that the designer can use, that he wants to, that we cleaned up the verbiage a little bit to make it more reflective of the industry standard upon which that was based, things like that.
Now, let me ask you, there's also one other recommendation having to do with sidewalks. Is that in this group of changes?
No, this is not part of that group of changes.
Okay. Well, since I brought it up, I'll take 30 seconds. The current standard is four-foot-wide sidewalks on each side of the street. What has been pointed out to us by the development community is, four foot is, you know, people don't walk on them. They either walk in the street, or, so one of the options that you'll be looking at in the future is to allow them to take the four foot from one side and just build a six-foot multipurpose path on the other side. You're still going to have sidewalks. You're not going to have subdivisions where you have nothing. But that's not tonight's discussion, so no need to discuss that any further, but you'll be seeing that in the near future. Any, anything else on MSSD?
Just questions, again, you have before you a resolution, and then, the proposed changes to the MSSD that we've briefly gone over here.
I'd move, Mr. Mayor, for the adoption of the Manual of Standards, Specifications, and Designs, as amended and discussed.
Second, is there any further discussion on this night? Here are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I would like to, I mean, NC State produces some good engineers, and I'm going to tell you, if you haven't ever appreciated Greg before, I think you can really appreciate the level of work that this gentleman and his staff have done.
Excellent presentation.
Excellent presentation, and it's a lot of detailed analysis, so, well done.
And he's had Greg and his staff, so.
Too excellent presentation.
I think, Mayor, that, have I missed something?
You've got a One City moment.
Yes, okay. Glenn, if you'll cue that up. And do we have a video, or is this just me talking this time? Apparently, we don't have a, apparently, we don't have a video. The One City moment that we'd like to bring to you tonight is the continuation of what we are doing, working with the county and with others. The experience this past, was it Wednesday, where we had the joint community session? If that wasn't a great One City moment of seeing people who talked about collaboration, it didn't matter whether you were talking about from the college, or from the base, or from the school system, or from the county, or from the city. The central theme across all of that was working together, collaborating. You have lived in this community much longer than I have, but I hope that you really value the unique point in time where we are now of governmental agencies getting along and working together. And that's our One City moment for tonight, is, let's keep pledging that we're going to work together.
I think that format change made a lot of difference in the world, too, to set the stage for the collaborative talk, you know, between the different entities that were represented there today. Did you want to give any credit to, to the format change?
Well, give the mayor the credit for that, because he said that his 22-minute speech was getting old, and he'd like something different. Mr. Ward made a good point, and that is, in some cases, there wasn't quite as much substance on data, and so, we'll try to refine that with the chamber as we move forward. I thought that was a very good constructive point.
I think it was a very welcome change, though, in the way it was done, conducted. And some of our staff was very instrumental in this.
Well, Glenn Hargett really is to be commended for taking the concept of the change and setting up that format, and Glenn did an excellent job there.
I think our citizens can express appreciation for collaboration, because it means creating synergy and doing more with less, and sometimes, less is, less tax dollars.
And another One City moment, just, we have the fourth annual Ainsley Angels Road Race this past week, and it was just a joy to go there for that event. It's grown over the last four years. It's a, it's really a nice event to have in our city, to give, you know, some recognition and awareness of people that, you know, do have disabilities in our community, and it was just a wonderful event.
And it was the largest turnout that they've had in any of their events. It was very well-attended.
And I think Mr. Thomas had something.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to say, I've had the opportunity the past couple of months to attend the adult fitness classes at our adult center out there. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Michael and Tony, and JoJo, Nikki, and Courtney, the ones that put them all on there, and it's a lot of fun. It didn't work, obviously.
I was going to ask, are you participating?
Well, now, observing, observing. I'll tell you what, it's a lot of fun, it's good for, you know, any fitness level, and they need more guys out there, I'll tell you.
What are you going to, the 7:30 or the 8:30?
I'm done. I did January, February, but I went to 8:45. 8:45.
You broke a sweat one time, and said that was it, okay.
And, you know, not really liking to brag, but I think sometimes you deserve it, and I'd like to say, I'm sure and proud of Jacksonville for having a championship girls' basketball team, and a championship boys', or people playing in the national championship, or the state championship this Saturday. We're going to pull for them both.
That's pretty good. One city, two teams.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everybody's located.